Ms. Tucker, are we live?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and start our governing board, the Washington Elementary School District Governing Board meeting for February 11th, 2021. And with that, Ms. Tucker, would you be kind enough to give us a roll call, please?
Yes. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President, Mr. Bill Adams, Governing Board Vice President, Ms. Nikki Whaley, Governing Board Members, Mr. Larry Herrera, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, and Ms. Jenny Abbott Bailey.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to take a moment. We'd like to take a moment of silence and just please think about all those that are hurting out there and hopefully we're going to get through all this COVID pandemic. Dr. Stanton, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, Mr. Adams. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, sir. And so, may I please have a motion for the approval of the January 28th, 2021 regular and executive session meeting minutes?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. May I have a second, please? I'm sorry. Yeah, may I have a second, please?
One second. Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So that brings us down to item F, current events and acknowledgements. Governing Board.
Jenny, I have something.
Please.
So I was able to visit Lookout and Royal Palm and Alcatillo about a week and a half ago. I had a great visit at each of those locations. I wanted to kind of see what was going on in the classrooms as far as how the classrooms were all set up and how they, like the personal protective things were available for when kids and teachers come back. Mostly, I just wanted to kind of see what was going on and visit each of the schools just to have an idea as I got to know some of the staff and the principals and so forth. So I really appreciate them hosting me. I had a wonderful time. And also, I just, you know, I thank all of the teachers and administrators, staff, everybody who's maintaining the schools. They look beautiful and also working so hard with the kids this year, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that report.
You're welcome.
Before I go further, I need to go back to item D, and I need a motion for the adoption of the February 11th, 2021 regular meeting agenda, please.
So moved. This is Nikki.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, everybody. I just, you know, I use a different agenda, and so I'm going to stop using this one. We just go directly off the screen. So we're still in public, I'm sorry, we're still in the current events. Any other board members?
Yes, Mr. Adams.
Ms. Whaley, please.
I just wanted to acknowledge all the teachers that are doing parent-teacher conferences this week. I know that they are all, you know, doing really a lot of work to make sure that they can provide all of the feedback to families. I was really happy. My particular teacher conference was really great. They had, she had, Ms. Frost had a little slideshow of, you know, things that have been going well and her scores and all of that. So really, to make an individual little PowerPoint because we're on this digital thing and make that process more interactive was really great. So, and I know all of our district and all of our teachers are trying their best to make that those parent-teacher conferences as meaningful as possible over this platform. So I just wanted to thank them for that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Whaley. Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, President Adams. I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge our Nutrition Services Department and just the, I think it's a department that's emblematic of so much of what's happening in our schools. So, you know, they have pivoted lots of different times to try to provide services for our kids. And, you know, my kids always tell me that the school lunch is better than what I do. You know, I'll make something and they'll say, oh, but at school, they do it this way. So I've been grateful to be able to rely on the expertise of the Nutrition Services Department and just the kind of people. We picked up lunches at several different schools during the last almost year now. And it's been, at first, it's a way for us to get out of our house every day, which was wonderful. And then just something we started to rely on, and it has made our lives so much easier and just the pleasant, you know, they're just so nice and kind when we pick it up. And then pivoting to offering dinners now, we're excited to pick up our first dinner tomorrow morning to share with our family. And I just, I think it is so, like I said, emblematic of the district in general and just how schools, you know, they do more than just house kids from eight to three. And they are the heart of our communities, and I think that's just a great example of how they're doing that. So I just wanted to express that appreciation to them for that hard work.
Wow, thank you so much. That was wonderful. Any other board members? Okay, well, briefly, I'd just like to say that I was fortunate enough to attend the ASBA Black Alliance meeting, and what these individuals are doing in regards to taking a look at our community is just amazing and very, very proud of those that attended. And I think they have some magic coming down the road or what we can do as a district.
That's what I told him. If he can't get in, we'll call you. Because that's what I knew.
Shannon, you're live, just so you know. Dr. Stanton?
President Adams, members of the board, members of the audience. It is a busy time of year. Ms. Tucker, you're still on a live mic, just so you know. I do want to thank Lydia and the whole virtual teacher fair team, Justin. We had a great fair in January, but we do have one coming up next week. Justin, make sure I have the dates right. I believe it's February 16, 17, 18. So I want to thank all the staff because interview committees have many people on them. And so, kudos to Lydia, Justin, and the whole team there. I do want to thank the transition to face-to-face team and Dr. Bailey and her leadership. We have been meeting twice a week now for quite a bit, going over what the transition will look like as we move, and we'll be updating people during the COVID update later on. And I too would like to thank the whole staff for parent-teacher conferences. It is unique times. I'm glad to hear our board members that have children are enjoying their experience. And I really want to say thank you to our staff, to our translators. I don't know if you guys realize how many translators in the district are going from location to location, conference to conference, and doing such an exceptional job. So I want to thank Inez and her team, and I do want to say thank you to WDA. I didn't say it last board meeting. We had a great meeting with them as well and thank them as well. So again, appreciate the time to just thank our staff for the hard work they're doing.
Thank you, sir. Wonderful. If we may, let's move on to public participation, please. Ms. Tucker?
We did not receive any requests for public participation.
Wonderful. May we, does anybody wish to pull anything with the consent agenda items? Okay, hearing none, I would like to pull item B, approval of personal action items. And so with that, may we have a motion to approve A, C, E, E, F, G, and H.
So moved.
I moved.
Thank you. In a second?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. And I will go ahead and make a motion for B. And if we may move that forward as presented, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. There's, I'm sorry.
Third.
Thanks, guys. All those in favor of approving approval of personal action?
Aye.
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 Fantastic. And that is approved. Dr. Stanton? Oh, yes, Dr. Stanton, I believe you take it for B.
With the, Mr. President Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, with the approval of the personnel item, I would like to introduce by telephone, Mr. Daniel O'Brien. I do like to give a little bit of background. We were trying to get the video set up, but unfortunately, Mr. Adams, it's not working, so I have him on telephone here. Mr. O'Brien has over 15 years' experience as a CFO within the state of Arizona. He has been the Chief Financial Officer for the Mason Public School District. He's also worked as the Chief Financial Officer in the Scottsdale Unified School District. He worked actually also in the Tulsa Elementary School District, and he did a period of time actually for a outside contractor. He's part of ASBO International, and for those that know ASBO, the Arizona School Boards, or excuse me, Business Officials Organization, and the local state affiliate. He's part of the Government Finance Officers Association. He's also part of AAAS, the National Superintendent's Organization. They have a consortium for CFOs, and he's actually part of that network as well. And so I'd like to introduce by telephone, Mr. Daniel O'Brien. Daniel, if you'd like to say a few words to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to first say thank you to the hiring committee and the members of the executive team and the board for this opportunity to be part of Washington Elementary family. I want to congratulate Ms. Thompson on her retirement. She has been a vital part of the district for many years. Ms. Thompson has done an excellent job for Washington Elementary School District, and I wanted to continue that. I look forward to being a part of the team and learning and growing with the Washington district. I, the work that Mrs. Thompson has done to the district is something special. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to the future as part of the Washington Elementary School District family. Thank you very much.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Brien, welcome to the family. We look forward to working closely with you. And Ms. Thompson, we are going to miss you terribly. Big shoes to fill. Thank you. Before we move forward, Ms. Tucker, can you give me the gifts? I can't, can you go to C, please? Thank you. And at this time, like, I'm sorry, at this time, I'd like to thank donors, I think it's Sonic and Week Care Foundation of Arizona. Thank you so much for your donations. Muchly appreciated. Thank you. So now we're on to information and discussion items. A, WESD, assessment data COVID impact, and meeting the needs of students. And Dr. Stanton?
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the audience, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mora to introduce Carrie Giovanni. Go ahead, Ms. Mora.
Good evening, President Adams, governing board members, community members as well. We are excited tonight to share some data with you. We, you know, have all been eagerly curious and anticipating to, you know, really, how have our students been doing in this most unusual environment? And so tonight, we are going to share some data with you and so that we can reflect a little bit on where we've been and how our students are performing. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Assessment, Dr. Carrie Jovanin-Jordan.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to present to you President Adams, Vice President Whaley, governing board members, Dr. Stanton, and Associate Superintendents. I'm excited to be here with you today, and I'm going to spend a few minutes just talking to you about what we've seen in assessment this year. So as you know, every area of education has been impacted by COVID and the safeguards that we've had to take. And so assessment is now no different. And in this case, well, as you know, assessments are written for a specific purpose, and they have very strict rules on how they should be administered so that folks in my position are able to tell staff definitively where strengths and weaknesses are so that you can use it to inform decisions and to support schools. In this case, in COVID, since COVID has started, assessment has had to compromise. We needed to just to make sure that we could get a data point for our students and for our schools just as a gauge this year. So in this case, typically, we use our, well, we always use for our benchmarks, our School City mimics. So these are, School City is the vendor. They call them the mimics because those assessments are mirrored after AZ Merit, now known as AZM2's framework. And so we use those three times a year, typically in a school year. And they are meant to be a snapshot in time of how our students are doing and what they know in various content areas. This year, we had to compromise, as I mentioned, and we could not collect the data as we normally would. We did collect data, and we can use it, but not exactly in the same way as we have in the past. So we had to administer our assessments remotely this year. And because of that, it opens up a little bit of a can of worms, and in my field, it's called validity issues. We had to, the teachers were administering it on Google Classroom, and they did a phenomenal job under very odd conditions. But this opened up various validity questions about the testing conditions. That doesn't mean that we don't have data this year. It just means that we're going to look at it differently than we have in the past. There are a few other items. We tested all in November, and the assessment, the assessments were administered one day in November. And so we had 18, about 18,000 students and teachers on our system in one day, testing all at the same time. So as you can imagine, that brings up other issues, technical issues, and if we had internet outages, that was also an issue. SRP was in our community on the same day we were testing writing, and so we ran into a little bit of issues there. Also, the assessments were timed this year. We recommended, strongly recommended that the teachers keep it at a timed 75 minutes, which is similar to what you should be used to on AZ Merit or AZM2. We did this, this was a collective decision so that we didn't take any more instruction time away from the teachers. But because of that, some of the students couldn't quite finish the test. So with these testing conditions, I'm just setting the stage for, I'm sharing the data with you and talking to you about how we might use this data to help inform us this year. What we're looking for is if this data is in a similar range to where it, where our students were last year in a typical year. And since this assessment was given in November, our closest data point is the one that we had middle of year last year. We used our School City mimics, and that was the final data point we had before COVID hit our community. So with that, I am going to ask Shannon to go ahead and flip the slides. So as I mentioned, we're looking for a similar range, and if we see a spike up or a severe drop down in comparison to what our students were doing in a typical year, then that raises a red flag and is a point for investigation. So what does that mean? Is that a definitive, you know, this is how our students are doing? No, it's not. But it is to raise some questions and to look further into that grade level, that content area, that classroom. Okay, yes. Thank you, Shannon. Now, I'm going to stay on this slide for a few minutes. There's a lot going on here. I do see someone has a question. Should I stop for some questions? I can do that right now.
I just have a quick clarifying question. This is Nikki. This is one day in November compared to March. I don't, I didn't catch the date that you're comparing it from.
Yes. President Adams, Vice President Whaley, good question. Thank you so much for that. This was our, approximately our middle-of-year assessment. So typically, in a normal school year, we have our pre-assessment in September, our mid-assessment in December, and then our end-of-year assessment in May. And so this one was in November, and so it's close to our middle-of-year last year.
Okay, middle-of-year December. Got it. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay. So I'm going to spend some time on this slide because it's, there's a lot of information here, and I want to make sure that we're, we all understand it and we're on the same page. So what you're looking at here are three charts, School City ELA, School City Writing, and School City Math on here. Now, we're comparing it to a typical school year. So the typical school year last year is in gray, and the November scores are in various colors. I tried to keep this theme throughout the entire slide presentation. Now, you need to keep in mind that these were given under different testing conditions and that they're not statistically comparable to our mimics, but merely a checkpoint. We needed a gauge to see, you know, how our students were doing. Is the range close to where they were previously in a typical school year? Now, the titles of these slides have a lot of information in it, so for the public and new board members, I'll explain those and unpack it just a little bit. School City English Language Learner, or I'm sorry, English Language Arts Benchmark Assessment is that first one in the upper right corner. We're looking at the average percent correct, and this is the average district-wide. So in these charts, we've got a very high-level overview to start with, and we're going to drill down as we go on in the PowerPoint. This is the average percent correct. And what we mean by percent correct is it's the percentage of test items that our students got correct on the test, okay? And this is average across all grades in that content area. Let me see what, oh, and this is, as I mentioned, a comparison of last year. So it's not quite the same set of students, but there again, we are just looking to make sure that they're in that range of where we are typically in a typical year. Are there any questions about this slide and the setup of the charts?
Board members? Thank you, Carrie.
Sure. Okay, Shannon, we can move forward. Want to make sure I'm looking at my notes, too. Okay, so the burning questions for everyone, you can go ahead, Shannon, the next one, are, you know, why do we need to assess our students this year? Is it meaningful, given the current testing conditions that I just described? And what does the data really tell us? So go ahead, Shannon, you can go forward. So while the testing conditions are different, the, you know, it's similar to this. It's, it is apples and oranges in terms of the validity. However, every data point is important. So assessments, these two are the same shape, the same size, they're fruit, but they're different. And in this case, our assessment testing conditions were different. So we have to look at our data this year slightly different than we've looked at our benchmark data in the past and that we will go back to in a typical school year. Okay, Shannon, you can move forward. So every data point is important, even under these conditions. Go ahead. Thank you. The, this data point was critical for us to collect, even though we knew the testing conditions were not going to be what we typically have. But what we did, as I mentioned before, we needed to see if there was some sort of gap. We wanted to see if the students were in a similar range as they were last year. Now, what does similar range mean? Well, in this case, you know, we look to see if they're too far off with the percentages. Plus or minus 10%, would be, in my opinion, somewhat close to what we need for, to feel confident that our students are progressing. Also, hold on, Shannon, sorry. Also, this data point was critical so that we can plan for the rest of the school year so that we meet our goals at the end of the year. So that's the importance of a middle-of-year assessment, which is the second point, that we have an opportunity to make changes if we need to, to make sure that we meet our target at the end. So go ahead, Shannon, move forward. All right, so this year, as I'm mentioning over and over, it's, this data point is a gauge for us to map out the rest of the year. And so this year is not about accountability. It's not about what some call a gotcha. This is about working together as an educational community, supporting our teachers. Even our best teachers needed more support this year under these crazy conditions. So this is about how can we support our schools? How can our principals support our teachers and so on? And so that's what we've been working with our schools on pertaining to this data. Go ahead, Shannon. Now, data, one data point alone does not give you much information at all. And so you really need multiple sources of data. So these types of items that I have listed here in the puzzle pieces are good, multiple sources of data to support the assessment data that you have as evidence and drawing a full picture of how your students are doing. Okay, Shannon, we can move forward. And of course, this was in November, as I mentioned, so it's mostly reflective of the quarter-one standards for our students. Go ahead, Shannon. So a deeper dive into the data. Let's take a look at the data at grade level. This is still district-wide at grade level. Now, these data charts are different than the ones I showed you in the first couple slides. So these data points are average percent correct, that's the same, but this is student cohort growth data with two consecutive points. So for instance, let's take grade four on, in the ELA chart at the top. So grade four this year, yes, Shannon, thank you, she's pointing to it. We saw district-wide, grade four in ELA, they had an average percent correct of 38%. When they were in third grade, they had an average of 30%, correct. So I hope that that is clear. I'll stop here to take some questions on this slide, the makeup of the chart, the data.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
President Adams?
Ms. Whaley, please.
So that's great. So when you say cohort, it means we're following them. So the same, in theory, it's not exactly the same, but the same group of kids from last year when they were tested now as fourth graders, even though some may leave and there may be some new ones in there, but as a cohort, as a class, we're following, this data is following them, whereas the other one was not following them, just in general, everybody all mixed up together. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Any more questions?
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay. So as you can see, you know, breaking it down by grade level, the finer you go down the levels, then the more you get to see of what's happening with the students. And so with that, we can move on to the next slide. This is our writing, and the same setup on this chart. So this is student cohort growth with two consecutive points, as was mentioned and clarified by Vice President Whaley. Okay, with that, we can move on. Here is a look at our demographics. So we'll spend a few minutes here and let you look this over, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. These are, I do want to make sure you know that these are the, let me tell you the grade levels. I have to catch up with my notes. Okay, in this data, it is average percent correct, but it's grades two through eight across the board, ELA, math, and writing. but it's grades two through eight across the board, ELA, math, and writing. Any questions on this data?
Do we have the ability to look at last year's?
Of course. I don't have that in this slide presentation. For demographics, that's what you're referring to, President Adams, is that correct?
Never mind, I'm sorry.
President Adams?
This is just demographics, correct?
Yes, this is.
Okay.
President Adams?
Please, Ms. Whaley.
Um, and I apologize, I should have put it in the chat. Ms. Peterson just put it in the chat, too. I, I actually thought that was a good question. I had a similar question on, I think that would be particularly interesting to see the, the, any kind of changes that happened between last year and this year for that. So I would like to see that, especially on this slide.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you. And Lindsay, I think you're up, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, oh, sorry. Thank you, President Adams. If, if, if I wanted to see sort of what the overall, so if I want to see what the female, how female compares to the overall, is this going to compare to the numbers on that very first slide?
Well, oh, President Adams, member Peterson. So the females, so what you're looking at is you would be double counting your females. So in the first slide, it was all students, all grades in that bar chart.
Right, right.
So the females contributed to that percentage in the all grades district-wide. Here, no, just females. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I just clarify my question a little bit? Sorry, I understand that. I guess what I'm asking is if I wanted to see how the females compared to the overall population. So like, the population of successful females is 41%, excuse me, on the ELA benchmark. So that number at the top of the slide, is that sort of the overall number that would compare to this data-wise?
Um, well, yes, you could, but as I mentioned, the, are you talking about the, I'm sorry, the charts in the first, second, the third slide?
Yeah, so the one that said.
Right.
So if I'm saying, okay, so in, in ELA, 40% of our students were successful in that. And then 41% of females, so the female beat the average overall. That's kind of, I want to see if I could use those numbers to kind of make that up.
Right, President Adams, member Peterson, that's a very good question, and it's a common question. In this case, though, you, you're not able to state that because the females are in that, that larger picture, in that first chart on Slide 3, and they're contributing to the 40%. So it's not a true comparison of how females are doing to the, the rest of the population. Now, I can pull the females out of that other chart, and then you would have the comparison that I think that you're looking for. And I'm happy to do so.
Okay, I just would like to see sort of like how these groups rank against, you know, the, the population as a whole.
Yes, very good question. Yes, I can come back with that and last year's demographics.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Board, you know, board, it appears that we may have a bunch of questions that we may want to get back to Lori and Carrie on this. I think we're used to, in the past, we've seen it presented differently. So forgive me for trying to get my arms around this. And Jenny, did you have something? I see that you agree. Is there any other comments you wish to make? Okay, and, and Carrie, I haven't called you doctor, so forgive me. So please be as informal as I am with responding to us.
Okay, that's fine. And we do have one more slide. Ms. Moore is going to wrap it up with next steps, if you'd like. Unless you have more questions on the data, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you.
I do have one more question, President Adams, I'm sorry.
Please.
Do we have any idea how many of our students actually? Because I think a huge concern that we have is just those students who are not engaging fully. So just comparison-wise, how many students we have that maybe we couldn't get to take the assessment versus in previous years?
Well, in this year, we had approximately 85% of our students who actually tested in ELA, math, and then for writing, it was 86%. So, you know, we were fighting against some very difficult testing conditions. But with 85%, that's overall for the school district, that's, that's very good. It is lower than what we normally have, but not too much lower. I can get that exact percentage for you from last year, but that 85% is what we had this year.
Thank you.
Nikki, did you have, I see your typing, did you have a question?
I was just going to let her finish. I do have some, but I was just going to let her finish the rest of the, the last slide there.
Okay, President Adams, governing board members, I'm going to go ahead and take the last slide. We always like to provide you with talking points at the end that summarize, you know, what the highlights of this presentation were. So as Dr. Dovin and Jordan pointed out, you know, although we're on a similar track and we're, you know, looking to be in close proximity to where we were assessing last year, many factors are involved with that different testing environment, percentage of students tested. So while, you know, we, we see that they're in a, kind of at a typical year level, we know that there's many other things that we need to take into consideration. We are eager to get our students back to the door and, you know, really drill down on how we need to then take this data and use it to support our students more fully. We are by no means, you know, suggesting that the online platform has, you know, given us similar to same results of what we've seen in the past. There are many other data points that we are looking at, and that one puzzle piece talked about. Those other, you know, the social, emotional, all those other pieces that we need to bring in, back into it. So second point, it's a good checkpoint on the progress for our students, but here again, it's a checkpoint. We know that we still have a quarter left of learning to do, and we are looking forward to really what can we accomplish during this next quarter when we hopefully have the students in front of us and we can move forward and really focus on some of those interventions and supports that we need to, to provide for our students. And so that's why this data is so important. Even though we do have the concerns with validity, we know that there are challenges in the assessment part of it, this will be data that we can then use to determine what are the next steps for our students. How can we really drill down and see how our subgroups are performing? We're concerned about each child. And although this is overall data, district-wide, we know that if we look and really dig deep with some of our students, they didn't perform at the same level. And so we have, we have much work to do. So once again, this is a point in time, but it will allow us then to make some great decisions about how we support students more fully with summer opportunities, classroom interventions, you know, after school, all those different things that we are looking to put in place to support our students fully when they come back. So with that, President Adams, we will take any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And Nikki, you have a couple of brief questions?
I'll see if they're brief. But I will ask the questions. I, first of all, I want to say I am very happy with the, the presentation. I really appreciated the way in which you kind of started up high and set the expectations of the, the limitations of the data that we're going to be looking at. And I also really love that you emphasized something that I find particularly important to, to note, which is this is not a punishment, this is, this is information for us to know how we can best support our teachers and our students and our families. So I, it's definitely the approach I take when I look at data, that is a flashlight, not a hammer. And so I appreciate you pointing that out. With that said, I'm asked, I would like to, my first question would be to say, what, I know we can't make any conclusions because of the data, but what inferences would you draw from this? I think, you know, and, and it says it here in the talking points, but I was wondering if there's any additional inferences or things that struck you, Dr. Giovanna Jordan, if you could point those out?
Well, with this data, we are, we are limited. And, and so what you can say is overall, our students are progressing. They, they are in the range of where they would be mid-year in a typical school year. That doesn't mean that there are spikes of high improvement. And overall, there aren't serious drops in academics. So I think that what we can take from this is some assurance that this year, our students are learning, they are progressing. The teachers are working very, very hard, everyone is, from the district on down, and it, and that's apparent. The teachers worked very hard to administer this assessment, which we're so grateful for. It was, it was trying, everyone had to learn to do this all at once. So that's what we can take away from this, that, you know, the assurance that our students are learning, they are progressing. I, we can't take any definitive kind of information from this as we normally would with a benchmark.
Thank you. The, the second question, and I know we're only asked two, and then I'll, I'll let somebody else ask a question. On the data by, and I'm going to call them demographic groups, I just, I don't, I know that the, the lingo is subgroups, but I like to say demographic groups. On that, I'm wondering, in addition to the pre and post, because I am interested in how all of those, for example, special ed, English language learners, and then our racial demographic groups, how those groups fared from last year. But I think Ms. Peterson brought up a good point, which was what percentage of the loss? And where are those, where are those demographic groups at? So meaning, if we normally have 95%, this year we had 85%, what is the makeup of that 10%? Because depending on those numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you're, I like data, but your, your job is data. It could skew the, the percentages, right? If we had a lot of students of color, for example, not there, it could move it up or down.
Yes, so, you know, every cohort can be different. So oftentimes in education, we'll, we'll have three cohorts in a row of, of students that perform similarly, and then all of a sudden, we'll have a cohort that, that doesn't perform the same way or, or test the same way as the previous one or the next cohort. So yes, anything, there are multiple factors that can play into any data points. And as far as the demographics on the slide before, there are a few subgroups or demographic groups that I do have the comparison of the general ed. So the gifted, the special education are there. Shannon, if you could roll back a slide? Yes, and so I just need to scoot in so I can read it myself. The gen ed students compared to EL students to give you some idea of how, how our students are doing. Now, of course, I don't have the female and male, though, compared to gen ed, like member Peterson would like, but I'm happy to, to get that. And any other information that you would like to see?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And again, board, I'm, I'm going to, I think that we're looking for some, I think we're looking for additional information. And if we can all get with Ms. Moore and with what we're looking for. So the next time around, I don't know when, we'll, 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 we'll review this data again. But hopefully, if we all get our questions together, because I know I'm looking for additional information, we could have that ready. Lindsay, did you have a question?
Jenny?
I did, but Jenny did too, so I think she's first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jenny, you want to, Jenny, want to go?
Sure. Do I say thank you, thank you, President Adams? Sorry, I'm just learning this stuff. And then, Doctor, could you say your last name?
Jevanone.
Jevanone Jordan, or just Jevanone? Jevanone, okay, I'm phonics, so Jevanone. And then I just want to say thank you, first of all, to you and to Ms. Moore. First of all, for meeting with me this week. This, it was so helpful to have a kind of tutorial on this information ahead of time, not necessarily the specific data, but the, just how all of this comes together. So thank you for your time and, and your patience for my questions with that. But also thank you so much for your enthusiasm with data and collecting the information and, and working with the assessments. I'm sure this year has been very difficult. It's been difficult for everybody in different ways, but, you know, I, I just appreciate your hard work and all this, especially coming new into this, Dr. Jevon, sorry, I'm, I'm learning. And then also just, I appreciate you bringing some of the other demographics into this as well. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing just that. And then you did allude to this, that the percentage growth is sort of similar to what you would see, you know, in a regular non-COVID year. Is that, I guess it was, what percentage growth do we usually see? I think you kind of mentioned that we're kind of in the ballpark, though.
Yes, we're in the ballpark compared to middle-of-year last year. So this is actually good news. I mean, I was, you know, we didn't know if we were going to see, if we saw a high spike from this testing year, that would bring in questions of, you know, did the testing conditions really have an effect on, you know, the, the results? And we didn't see a real deep drop necessarily. Now, every school has their own data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsay, would you like to ask a question?
Yes, thank you, President Adams. I just wanted to ask, so you mentioned that you do the pre-test using the School City mimics, and then the mid-year test using supposed to be mimics. Do we use School City mimics at the end of the year, or do we use AZM2 data? Or is that just separate?
Very good question. So we do administer our district benchmarks three times a year. So September, December, and May. Now, AZM2 is actually in April. And so, but there are, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, every data point is very important. Of course, the beginning of the year, we see if there was a learning loss over the summer from the previous year, right? That's, that's used to set up our groups, too, if you need to group your students in your classroom. The middle of the year is our checkpoint to, to see whether we need to make any changes in, in our course so that our students actually meet the target at the end of the year or are prepared for AZM2. And then the end-of-the-year point is actually, you know, for us to see, to reflect over this past year. How did, how did everything go? Did we incorporate new curriculum, you know, things like that? It's a very good time for teacher reflection. And it sets us up for the beginning of the year next year, for that gap, looking at that gap.
Thank you. And I just also wanted to say, you know, this data, it's, it, it, it's not really a super surprise to me because, you know, in our home, I go to kindergarten, second grade, or sixth grade and eighth grade every day. And just what Ms. Moore's department has done and the data that you put together, what our teachers have done, like, yeah, our kids are learning, I've, you know, been there as they've been doing these little data points in the classroom and gathering data on our kids. It's not surprising, but it's encouraging to see how much our kids are able to learn, even in a pandemic year. And I know there's so many people working. Thank you for putting this data together.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you, thank you. Can you tell me what AZM2 is?
Yes, it's the new AZ Merit. So, yeah, the state named, named it AZM2. They're changing vendors. And so just another acronym now for us.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, over the years, over the many years, whenever we've talked about data, and I always, if we were here in person, I'd be looking at Dr. Stanton to my right. And it's always about, and again, this is a different format for me to, again, trying to get my arms around it. You could always see what we've done in the past and where we are today and what we anticipate. And you could forecast. Of course, it's forecasting, it's all just numbers. But it was always important, and I think my fellow board members have also mentioned, I think Nikki did it. You know, not using the hammer, you know, data is just data. But the fact that we're moving the chains, I think, is, is what we've always said, that, hey, you know, we're still headed in the right direction and, and we're still moving those chains forward. So I'm, as I'd like to see more data and some comparisons, it'd be easier for me because I'm a visual it'd be easier for me because I'm a visual person. I wanted, I want to thank you for this report. I want to welcome you to the family. And we look forward to many, many years of great data reporting. Fellow board members, did anyone else have any questions before we close this out? Nikki? Okay.
I just have one last question, Bill, I'll be real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
I know that we're using this for interventions and that's, and this is probably a more, Ms. Moore question. I know one of the things that we do at WESD is we also look at it by school. And that would be really, you know, interesting because we, I would just like to see, you know, are we seeing similar growth? Is there any particular schools that are not seeing as much growth and all that? I know you're looking at that. So I, that's another way to separate it out. But one thing that I love about our district is that we are good at finding bright spots and saying, okay, what schools are doing this really well? Or what schools with populations that don't usually do very well are doing really well? And so I was just wondering, were you able to identify some bright spots?
Well, so as I mentioned, this is the, the bummer, I guess, for lack of a better word, of the testing conditions that we just experienced in November. So this is very unlike any district benchmarks that we typically can, can answer that question with. This one is more of a fuzzy, fuzzy kind of number. It's not the definitive numbers that we typically get with our benchmarks. So while we are, while we did give our schools data, they do need this checkpoint to see, you know, where their students are, if they're in the range as they were in previous years. And they're, and they're working with it. It's not a data point that they can use in a continuous improvement plan. Or you can't hang your hat on this data point.
Okay.
Okay, yes. But in the future, when we get back to normal, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doctor, thank you. And Lori, did you have a comment you wish to make?
Yes, thank you, President Adams. And Ms. Peterson mentioned it, we appreciate it. And, you know, we just want to reiterate that we do believe the fact that we have teachers online with kids, you know, all day, working directly with lessons that have been teacher-developed, very focused. We do account that to being a factor in why we are seeing the results that we're doing. And, you know, here again, we cannot thank our teachers enough. This is by no means been easy. And, you know, we know that there is much more that we have to get our students, you know, learning and doing. But they have done an amazing job of really supporting them through all this. And so our data reflects that. And so, you know, we do want to make sure we're recognizing that. Also, you know, we did want to mention that we understand that assessment is, you know, extremely important. But when we get our students back through the door, we're looking forward to having some great instructional time with them. And since we do have to take the AZ Merit this year, we are looking at not administering our Washington Elementary School District end of year assessments to ease up on some of the, the time that that would take. And that'll give us an opportunity to really focus on getting, you know, our, our instruction back on track, meeting their needs, but then also, you know, offering some support to our teachers to not have to do quite so many assessments. So we'll be looking forward to sharing the AZM2 results at the end of the year. Thank you, I just wanted to share that.
Wonderful. Lori, if you would please, the next time this comes before us, would you, and obviously we all read our agendas, but you might want to give us like a week out and give it, give us a heads up that it's coming so that if we have additional questions or what we may be looking for, we can tell it, we could, we could let you know what, what, it might help you in your next presentation. Sound good?
Absolutely. We would be happy to do that.
It's wonderful, great presentation, guys. And we are at, I believe we're down to B COVID update, if I'm not missing anything. And Dr. Stanton?
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, as we've now been doing for many weeks, we would like to go around the virtual dios and to update you on what's happening regarding our COVID-19 and activities to transition. So Dr. Bailey, if you will lead off.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Thank you, President Adams, Vice President Bailey, and members of the board, and also people that are listening and, I guess, watching this presentation. I am going to talk about two main topics. One of them is what we've been calling our transition face-to-face meeting. And then the second topic I'm going to talk about is Read Across America, which is coming up very, very quickly. So our transition face-to-face meeting, we've been meeting close to four weeks. And that really, what we're doing is we're planning to return, for our students to return in person. And our aspirational goal, I believe that was mentioned last board meeting, is March 22, which is the Monday after we get back from spring break. So when, all of the committees that are part of the transitional face-to-face meeting, and this is the same groups that met during the summer to, to plan for our reopening, they have been actually looking at that March 22 deadline and then really planning from there and seeing what we have to plan in between if we're going to get to that March 22. So the, the first part of our plan actually starts tomorrow night when a commitment form is going to go out to all of our families. And Lori, Mrs. Moore, I'm sorry. Mrs. Moore will go into the commitment form in her focus area during her presentation. So every single family will get a commitment form and they will have to commit to either an in-person model or an online model for the rest of the year. So it is a commitment, not a survey that had previously gone out in the fall. So that's February 12. And then each family has till February 19 to actually fill that out. And during that time, we're doing a lot of communication. Our CAPE department has a whole communication plan that they've been working with the transition group. So that gives them to February 19. From February 19 through February 26, which is maybe approximately a week, that's when the schools actually follow up with any families that have not responded. And they'll follow up with phone calls, with emails, with texts, any way to actually get the commitment from those families. So then that brings us to March 1. That's when we start scheduling for either the students to come back online or to come back in person. And we really need that time from March 1 through March 12, which takes us just before the, before the spring break. Because we, transportation has to know who's going to be on the buses. Nutrition services have to know how many lunches are going to be served. The scheduling department has to know who they're going to be scheduling staff and students for the online and for the in-person. So that's basically what we've been planning for. And all of the committees are working together to make this a smooth transition. We've had a little bit of an experience because of coming back in October. And there were some challenges and some barriers that, that we're now working through, and especially with scheduling. We want to make sure that that is as smooth as possible. So that's why our commitment form, and I know Ms. Moore will go into it, is really hooked right up into synergy. So when a family actually commits to one of those models, the, the school actually gets that data right away so that they know who has been, who has responded. And then they can follow up with those parents that, that we still need to work with. So that is really what the transition committee has really been working with and really building this model together. The second item that I wanted to talk to you about is one of the really fun events that we have every single year, and it's called our Dr. Seuss Day. It is March 2. It is the birthday of the author of all of our Dr. Seuss books. Because we're in a virtual type of environment, we're still going to celebrate it. It's going to be a little bit different. And US board members, we're inviting you to celebrate with us in, in one of two ways or actually both ways. So one of the ways is if you would like to record yourself reading a book, and then those recordings, we're building a library up for classrooms to actually view those recordings. And the CAPE department's going to send you all of the information on that. Also, and some of you may have already been invited, some of the schools are inviting celebrities like you and individuals like you to actually read in the class, to go into a Google Classroom and to actually read quote "live" in a classroom. So just so you know that there is ways for you to actually be part of this Dr. Seuss Day, which unfortunately we can't do it in in-person type of model, but hopefully it will actually still be a fun celebration and really celebrating reading in our community. So Dr. Seuss Day, just look for more information on that. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, as we continue around the virtual dios, Mr. Wing will bring an update related to COVID-19 and human resources. Mr. Wing?
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Thank you, President Adams, governing board, audience. A few updates related to COVID and then a few updates related to work being done during COVID. We have continuously communicated with our staff, particularly around the closed pod opportunity. And thankfully, we were able to secure our first vaccination closed pod this upcoming weekend, actually, February 13th and 14th, thanks to Moon Valley and Independence High School for hosting. For our employees, Glendale Elementary and Glendale Union employees. Do want to appreciate everybody in WESD who put in to volunteer over the weekend. That was a great commitment. Actually, we had too many volunteers, so some were turned down. But we greatly appreciate your support and your willingness to volunteer. This is the time of the year where our interest-based negotiations team continues, continuously meets. There's been a lot of subcommittee work. Thank you for the, those on the subcommittee. Most of it's been, is done after hours. So thanks again for your commitment. We did have our employee, annual employee working edition survey completed last month. And the preliminary information was shared with IBN and we're just about done analyzing district-wide those results. We do anticipate providing a lot of our interest-based negotiations, our IBN team's recommendations next governing board meeting, February 25. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our bridge committee. Earlier this week, on Monday, we did submit to the State Department of Education and the State Board of Education a recommendation to expand our educator preparation program to include the special ed teacher area. So we, if approved, we will be the first district in Arizona to have a special ed cohort. And I will certainly bring the details as soon as we're made aware, particularly if approved. Thank you, Dr. Stanton.
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the audience, continuing around the virtual dios, Lori Mora will speak related to COVID-19 and academic services. Lori?
Thank you, President Adams, governing board members. So as you heard Dr. Bailey talk about, we are getting ready to ask our families to make a decision and a commitment. We're not calling the survey because at this point we really need some decisions so that we can go ahead and get ready to have our classroom staff properly know, you know, who we have coming through our doors and who we need to be prepared for. So we will be sending out a commitment form tomorrow. It will go out, as Dr. Bailey mentioned, via email. So it will be attached to our synergy, but parent view, you know, if our families have parent view, that's great. But if not, they will still receive that email. So they need to be looking for that. It's going to be very simple. And we really simplified the questions so that it's really a decision. Are you planning on having your child return to us when the doors open in person? Or are you going to choose to remain online? We have repeated a couple of different pieces in there to make sure that our families understand that we are looking for a commitment for the remainder of the quarter, for the year. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we have, we have our students where they need to be to finish the year strong. So that's repeated throughout the, the survey questions. We do have an option for additional family members to be added if families would like to choose a different option. And we did have this where maybe a middle school student, they wanted in person, but a, you know, younger child, they wanted to have remain online. That is an option. And so we are going to ask that if that's the case, there will be an opportunity to list which students you would like to have stay in person and online and make that note in the actual survey. So once again, one email will be a response for all of your family members. And so they'll have an opportunity to, you know, to delineate if they want a different choice. Some of the other improvements we weighed, once again, simplified format, fewer questions, the clarity of the questions that we're asking so that there isn't, you know, confusion about what the question is really alluding to. And one piece that we really do appreciate about the synergy format is that then that allows our schools to have a very concise report that they can run and pull. And so as we've mentioned, you know, they, they will be able to follow up and see who has responded. And then who can we reach out to, to make sure that we have a response from? And so we'll be looking at those efforts to support our schools as well. This is a, you know, a big undertaking, but it's an important piece of work. And so we really want to try and get ahold of as many families as possible. So we look forward to hearing from our families and getting those responses back. With that, we also shared the data for tonight. So I will go ahead and conclude our report. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience. And I think Lori, one thing we, the transition team's talking about, that'll be a separate email than our normal parent update. If I recall, it would actually be a separate email, one, one subject, correct?
Yes, that is correct. It will be separate from any other update we're sending.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, as we continue around the virtual dios, Ms. Kathy Thompson will also update the board related to COVID-19 and business services. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Stanton, and good evening, governing board members. I just have a couple of items to update you on this evening related to our trip through COVID land this year. We are right now waiting on the ADE to roll out the final allocations and the applications for this next SRT2 grant that we're going to apply for that will enable us to provide some services and things that we would not normally be able to do over the next couple of years. Our district is expected to get in excess of $20 million. First estimates around at least 25 or more. So we're lurking on that, really being able to help us with what we need to do for our students. One of those allowable expenses in that grant are for facility upgrades or projects that can improve air quality in our school facilities. So there is one thing that we've been in looking at, moving forward and trying to have a goal of, in March, coming back. What we have decided to do is we are working on ordering some, there are HEPA filters, there's a machine that includes HEPA filters that scrubs or changes out the air a certain number of times per hour in our classrooms. What we're looking at for this piece of equipment, we did purchase some of these on a little smaller scale back at the beginning of the year to put them in locations where students could not wear masks or in the health offices where we may have sick children coming in at any given time. We'd like to roll them out further across the district into areas or rooms that maybe schools would have challenges of keeping the six-foot distance for students and adults. So that would not be every single room in our, in our district, but it would be those areas where we would anticipate there might be some challenges with maintaining that social distancing that we're asked to do. It is a, it is a large project to undertake because with the rooms that we're looking at, it's over 1,500 of these, of these devices. We do feel that it will be one additional mitigating circumstance for us as we try to bring children back into our classrooms. That is the main project we're working on right now. Again, that is, that's big for us. This grant is big for us. And we, we're in the process of planning out how we will be able to spend that over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And I will conclude. Mr. Adams, members of the board, members of the audience, Ms. Tucker, if you'll put up our metrics. So I know that the board is very familiar with the current circumstance of the community spread levels from the Arizona Department of Health. You can see the green traditional, which we've referred to as face-to-face. You can see the yellow hybrid, which our district was in around fall break. And then substantial, which is what we're in right now. So this, this has stayed the same. Ms. Tucker, if you'll move it down, please. So there has been a fairly dramatic change this week in the metrics or benchmarks. So, there has been a fairly dramatic change this week in the metrics or benchmarks, and I think it's important to note, this is something that we saw coming. If you do look at the Arizona Department of Health's website, or even Maricopa County's health website, they use a seven-day average that our own Joe Alessi and Kathy's department tracks very closely. And we saw that the seven-day average before was going down fairly dramatically. And if you'll take a look closely on the right, the cases per 100,000 went from 615 to down to 372. That's a substantial drop. Glendale Union and Glendale L saw similar drops earlier. Justin mentioned we are working with them on getting our vaccines together as a, as a system of all three school districts. If you notice, our percent positivity also went down fairly dramatically from 24% to 19%. That's a 5% drop. That's fairly significant. And then finally, the Maricopa County metric, the first one, COVID-like illness, went from 10.3 down to 7.4, so almost a 3% drop. And so, these are significant changes. These are in the quote-unquote "right" direction. These are what we've been hoping for. And according to Maricopa, Mrs. Fernandez and I watched it again today, they are predicting that this will continue in this manner. So, as I mentioned last board meeting, we believe that it's in all likelihood, the metrics will continue downward. As Justin mentioned, we are getting our first COVID, excuse me, our first vaccinations this weekend. And then we're hoping roughly about 28 days later, because we're using the, oh, my, sorry, Moderna, thank you, the Moderna vaccine, that we'll be able to get that in our staff, you know, again, 28 days later, so that we have the opportunity to come back in person or face-to-face. So, our target aspirationally has been, and I do want to remind everybody, Justin mentioned at last meeting, we're the, around the 10% number is what we're looking at, because when we first started this, Maricopa had more of a hard, fast line for like even hybrid at 7%. If you look at their website now, they're actually talking about, can you keep your mitigating strategies up? Can you actually get your teachers or substitutes that you need? So, they're talking about staffing, and they're talking about, do you have your mitigation strategies? You heard Kathy actually mention, not only that we are doing our own mitigation strategies that we've been doing a while, but actually now we're adding filtration, air filtration systems to help out our staff and students. So, we do target the spring break arena to return face-to-face. That's aspirational at this point, but we will like to see the metrics move in this direction in the next couple of weeks, because that would put us very close to, say, the 10% mark, to then look at having kids come back. And with that, I will take, all my team will take board questions. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Stanton, and thank you, team. Ms. Whaley, please.
Thank you, President Adams. I have several questions, but they all have to do with the certi-, or the commitment letter that's going to be going out. The first thing I want, I want to clarify is when we talked about March 22nd being an aspirational, and we're talking about giving people the choice of being in person or virtual, is the assumption that it's full face-to-face, traditional, or hybrid?
We're going to ask the question face-to-face, because when we talked about our scheduling, we want to know if and when we're able to get to that. Obviously, we have to consider the other option, but we learned the first time, we had too many questions. It was difficult to understand. And so, we are going to ask the face-to-face and virtual question, Ms. Whaley, to try to see who wants to stay virtual remainder of the year, and then who is looking to come back face-to-face. So, we're going to try to ask it in those simple questions.
Okay. And that's where I wanted to kind of go with my second question, because I think there was a lot of confusion, because we weren't really clear in what in the, we, we just said you want virtual or in person, but we didn't say like, we will open up when we hit X metric. Given that we hit X metric, are you going to be virtual or hybrid? Will this survey or this question provide that? Like, we will be in traditional once we hit 5% and cases below 32. Will you join us in person or virtual when that metric is met?
We're saying that the metrics are going down. So, as I mentioned, what used to be the 7%, even Maricopa County is now saying rough around, roughly around the 10%, but they're also saying, can you get the mitigating strategies and the staffing? So, we are saying if they stay trendward down, and again, if you follow the target, actually, if it were to continue at 5%, we would be around the 10% right in two weeks from now. That would actually continue that trend downwards. So, we're saying if they continue downward and, and we're able to keep the mitigating strategies, we would like them to then say, would you come back face-to-face or virtual? So, no hard and fast number, but actually the trend.
So, my concern with that is how do you make a, I mean, I don't see how families could make a decision, because there's, there's like trending down. I think if we don't put like a, a number, we're going to have people saying, well, we're trending down even though we're still at 300 or 250. I mean, I think there should be a cut. This is my opinion. I'm just sharing my opinion. But as a parent, it's like, you know, my answer to that question would be different. If we hit the metrics that we said that from the beginning, like so saying, we will be at traditional when we're under 5%, then yes, I have one answer. If you're saying, will you send them back full tradition when we're at 13%, that's a different answer. And so, I think if we are not being upfront with, you know, what exactly we're considering opening the doors, and we give this vague kind of thing, I think we're setting up to confuse people and to like have people be really unsure. That's just my two cents on that. I don't know if you have any thoughts.
Ms. Whaley, members of the board, members of the audience, one of the things on Maricopa County's website is they're saying that can you have the mitigation strategies even if the numbers are higher? So, that's why we're trying to say towards that 10%. But Mrs. Whaley, like I said, we're, that's up to you. And by the way, that's why we'd have you call your, you know, your school to, to discuss with them that type of situation. But the idea we're trying to get to is who wants to come back face-to-face and who's going to stay virtual for the remainder of the year? I mean, if the trend stays down, we'll pass through, you know, substantial to hybrid to, you know, again, getting close to what we call face-to-face. But again, like I'm saying, the state now is saying, and Maricopa County is starting to say to us that, hey, if you can keep your mitigation strategies going, and you can have staffing, then they're actually saying you could possibly open up. So, that's why we're trying to ask the two questions, because as you clearly identified the first time, we asked three questions. It was extremely difficult for people to understand. And so, we're doing our best to kind of narrow it down to two, to give them those options to see, you know, assuming everything goes where it's going, that they would eventually come back. And I will, I will say the vaccines will also be helpful for our staff as well. We're also hopeful, again, once we have those vaccines in our staff. Obviously, we're talking about the children here, so that's why we want to still give the, if a parent wants to stay virtual, we want to give them that choice. We've said that since the beginning.
Yeah, I just, I, I have a fear that the, like, I want to be in person, but if, I'll just give my own personal, like, if I'm going to be in person, or if somebody wants to be in person, assuming what our metrics were before. If we don't give them any kind of, if we just say downward, I think that's, that's really vague and very difficult to make a, just a commitment, because you're asking for a commitment. So, that, I'll just leave that where it's at. My, my last question is, did the committee test these questions with people not part of the committee and not internal people of the district? Because I think that was another kind of shortfall, is we didn't ask everyday, regular people out there, not living and breathing these committee work, what they thought about the questions. And so, it made sense to the people in the room who wrote the question. So, I'm just wondering, was this tested out externally at all?
Mrs. Whaley, members of the board, members of the audience, we did test it outside of the committee. We did not go to outside, outside parents. We did actually use people that are in the district but are not on the committee, so they haven't seen the questions. They didn't know. So, we tried to use our current people who are parents, also, by the way, also parents in the district. I think I said that correctly, Ms. Mora. Is that correct? But the idea is that we did not use the people on the committee. We actually used third-hand, so they see it for the first time. We tried to, and then we're actually beta-testing the system, Ms. Whaley, so it actually goes through synergy as described. We did have some issues before because we used a Google system, and this one, you can't also put in multiple answers, other than if you have multiple kids. Ms. Mora, anything else to add to that?
Yeah, that is correct. And, you know, we did want their feedback on how easy was it to navigate, and did they understand the questions? So...
I really appreciate that. Thank you for making that adjustment time around.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Ms. Whaley, great questions. Thank you. Board members, any other questions? Dr. Stanton, just, so, I'll, just for clarification, first of all, I think that you're really trying to, great customer service, forgive me, but you're trying to accommodate everybody. And, and I, I appreciate that. I also appreciate Ms. Whaley's comments coming from being a parent and living through this. The, and we've talked about it many times, so just so I get, I have a clear understanding, so around the 26th, we're anticipating for intensive purposes, a hybrid model.
Mr. Adams, member of the board, member of the audience, I believe you mean the 22nd. You said 26th.
Forgive me.
Yeah, so I want to be clear on that, so. Mr. Adams, I, I'll say to you this way, if we are able to see those numbers come down below 10%, we're actually trying to see if we can actually get back potentially face-to-face. That's why we kind of, you know, there's many people in education that say, start with the end in mind. And so, we're saying, the two questions we want to ask, as Ms. Whaley said, because it was confusing, and we take full ownership of that the first time. Are you willing to come back face-to-face? Are you willing to come back virtually for the remainder of the year? That's what we're trying to do. We have hybrids still as an option. I will point out to Mr. Adams that the state defines hybrid as some students on campus and some students virtually. That's different than we've done it, and that's why we've been actually trying to use our term traditional or face-to-face, because that's what parents have been used to. But we are trying aspirationally. If you look at the trend, Mr. Adams, again, at 5% positivity change, if we actually continued on that trajectory, you know, we'd be down close to 10% in two weeks. And then after that, we might even go below that. And according to Maricopa, they don't see any reason at this point that these numbers would not continue in the current downward trend, assuming people in the community, the spread in the community is a big factor. The people mask up, people wash their hands, people stay, you know, stay home when they're sick. Then that should continue this trend downward.
So, on the 21st, based on trend, we got a shot at possibly face-to-face?
The 21st, I believe, is a Sunday, so, but Monday, the 22nd.
22nd, forgive me.
We have a possibility of that, Mr. Adams, yes.
Okay. And I, I like the fact that, that we are communicating, we are, the amount of communication that's going at, I personally think it's phenomenal. And, and obviously, as a board, let us know what we can do to help too, please.
Mr. Adams, I could, we actually, tomorrow, we are going to send out two messages. One will be our normal parent update that you just mentioned. We appreciate the compliment. The other idea is that it'll just be this single commitment question by itself. So, we want to make sure, and it's going to families, I think Mrs. Mora alluded to it earlier, for those that don't have access, we'll be following up the schools, or they're going to have a week to follow up, to make those calls, to reach out to families. Also, Mrs. Mittwhaley, you usually mention the language issues we have. We do have interpreters that help us. And so, we're going to reach out for a whole week, because we want 100% response, to make sure that we know. And we know it's tough to make a commitment for, you know, the next nine weeks, especially when you're asking a month out. I do want people just to realize is that is the boat that many districts are in, and we're trying to say, we believe this will go exactly in this direction. Obviously, I can't predict the future perfectly, but if it continues that way, yes, we could have a strong potential, Mr. Adams, for face-to-face on the 22nd.
Thank you. I know that we always say that we're a large ship, and just trying to turn it is always not as simple as one would expect. I also appreciate the fact that we've been here before, and that everything is lined up, so that hopefully the transition will be easier, if you will. And, and I love the preparation that's going on as we speak. With that, I want to, I want to, I want to thank the team for the wonderful presentations, very, very informative. I want to thank my board members, some great questions, some great insight, and very much appreciated there. And with everybody's permission, I'll move on to the next agenda item, which would be a request for future, future reports and agenda items. Anybody have anything? Okay, hearing none, may I please have a motion to adjourn?
So, I'll move.
May I ask? Was that Nikki?
Lindsay, sorry.
I'm sorry, Lindsay, thank you. A second, please.
Hi, second.
Jenny.
Okay, so Jenny.
Jenny, and Lindsay and Jenny.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't see you, I'm sorry. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you again. Great job, everybody. Have a good evening. Have a great weekend.
Thank you, you too.
Bye, bye, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.